Yo! Good evening! Time to have a little study session. I saw a hand on Poker Studies Forum, posted by Timmy. Let's... Put up the hand here. I hope you can see, it's a bit small print. But it's PL02. No information on the opponent. There are some answers, and the reason why I wanted to... Get this hand... On my dashboard... Or on my drawing board... Is that the answers were pretty interesting. That's... What I wanted to talk about. Thought about making a long post, but then I thought, "Oh man, if I'm going to do the work, then why not put up a stream, let's do a study session, and then we will follow that by PL0V's Chris, because I haven't done that in ages." Let's go through the hand first. What is going on here? There's a button open, it's PL02, so these dollars are big blinds. It's easier. 300 buttons, 3 bets. We call, flaps is queen, 5 deuce. Cut shot and backdoors. Open a bet slightly less than half a pot. Hero calls. Turn gives us open ender and a cut shot, we do not flush draw. Open a bet half a pot. River is a flush. He checks, and hero bets 57 BBs instead of shoving. And the question: was that okay? And in the answers, there was a lot of discussion about should we float the flop, and if we float, what combinations we have. It's a 3-bet pot, and so on. Thing is that the explanation went at decently high level. When we think about balancing our floating ranges, and what the opponent range should be, and he's going to bluff on that board, he's going to barrow some turns. Then I wondered that, "Oh man, that's PL02." If we start to think too complicated, then in PL02, it's going to backfire. Because when you start to think about balancing our floating range, it assumes that opponent understands what you're doing, and is capable of exploiting you. And that's not going to happen in PL02. I mean, the level of play on PL02 is here. I don't know, here is the lowest that you can see on the webcam. So if we start to think in here, and the opponents are here, it's not going to work. But, on the other hand, if we always just attack the situation like, "Oh, it's PL02, we can do whatever we want, we don't learn." Then when we go PL05, you can use the same strategy as PL02. You have to be a bit more worried about what opponents understand and think. PL025, you have to think about what the opponent thinks. Salat vs Rex, PL050 and above. If you don't think what your opponents think, they're going to run you over. So... My thoughts on this hand is that we can approach it from two perspectives. One is PL02. We say, "It's PL02," and we do this because it's PL02. Which is fine when you're playing in PL02. And the second perspective is what if it was PL025 vs good Rex? How would it change? And then, when you know what we do and why we do, it helps you to become better. So let's take the easy route. PL02, standard opponent in PL02 is looking at his hand, and then he selects one of the 3 buttons. And some of the time, he presses the button he chooses to. And some of the times, he doesn't, he does something else. Standard PL02 Rex doesn't have the thing called ranges. Because one day, he might treat the hand that he folds, another day. Sometimes with the top set, he's slow play, sometimes he is aggressive. Sometimes with 2 pairs, he folds, sometimes in the same situation, he raises. So, standard PL02 player doesn't have any set ranges and strategies. He lives in the moment. So the actual way he plays his hand is based on how has the day been for him or her, what his feelings are, and so on. So if you start to think too complicated, it's not going to work because the opponent you assume is just isn't there. But, you can play versus average ranges, which is better than having no estimations at all. But... So that's how people play in PL0. I mean, PL0, don't get me wrong, I love playing in PL0. I have had some projects where I play PL0, and I love it because it's so stress-free. Or not stress-free. Well, it's stress-free because the money is so small that it doesn't matter if you lose 30 blinds to me. For some, it's big money. But you don't have to use your brain too much. You don't have to think how to play the spot. If I check, does he understand I'm capped? Am I high on my range, low on my range? Okay, I want to bluff this river. Is this a good candidate for the bluffing, and so on? But you can just have a really easy, solid strategy and just execute. It's like working in an office without thinking. Just doing the same thing every day. Finishing same papers every day, same way. But PL02. 300 big blind, we don't know anything about the opponent, so let's assume he's unknown. 3-bet here is very ace heavy, very pocket kings heavy. So we could even argue about folding. One thing that we can check is that, let's assume that opponent range is pocket aces. And standard PL02 player, pretty much SPR, slightly less than 4, he's going to stack off on many flops with aces. So let's do a peel and shove. So we see what is our EV if we call and stack off on the flops where we have equity versus ace. So we assume that opponent shoves any flop. That's the best case scenario probably for us here. And now, it's a bit of time because the stream is up. My computer is so slow. But here we can see that we stack off only 24% of the flops. And soon, we will have the EV up here. So it tells us pretty much how close we are. Of course, in reality, sometimes he has pocket kings. We have more equity than expected. Sometimes he has a weird hand, and we end up having huge equity. But pretty much, we are going to hit the flop hard enough 24% of times. So sometimes, it's better. Sometimes on ace-high board, we end up giving value for opponent's aces. But if his range is ace-ace, and he goes broke on any flop, the EV of a call is 3.6 BBs. Probably plus-minus 1 or 2, because there's variance in the calculations. So due to rate, it's very break-even. So... If he's a player who folds pocket aces post-flop easily, it increases our EV. So the pre-flop call is a bit marginal, but I would not fold. We don't know what he has. Sometimes he bets small on the flop, increases our EV, sometimes he checks the flop. So definitely call pre-flop. That would be too needy to fold. And then the flop is queen-5-deuce. Standard PL02 Rex decides to bet half a pot. If you had ace-3-4, I would just raise. For full equity and actual equity. Now, I don't like to raise because our actual equity is pretty poor. Versus pocket aces, we have 28%. So the stack off we need 45. We have 30, so... If he was a player who bet-folds aces on this board, then you could even raise this one, because you have huge fold equity. But if you had ace-4-5 and ace-4-3, that would be a pretty easy raise. Versus PL02 player. But... The question here is that if we call, how many good turns we have? So standard PL02, I think, it's the easy route is to just to fold. You have just an open. I mean, you have a just a cut shot and backdoors. And once you call, the pot is 41 BBs, and you have 80. So the SPR is 2. You don't really have a lot of implied odds. So, standard approach, PL02, fold, move on. You don't need to force yourself into playing these tricky, really marginal spots on PL02. You just fold, and when you hit, you stack him off, and you still make tons of money on PL02. But, when we change the situation, we give him slightly different 3-bet range. So we move up in stakes, and he's a good player. His sizing is pretty weird, but let's say he's 3-betting here around 10%. Well, I think 8 is more likely. So versus that range, we are suddenly 41/59 even on this board. And the thing is that how often he has pocket aces on this board? Because when we have 1 ace in our hand, and opponent's 3-bet range becomes wide, like here it's 8%, he has pocket aces only less than 1 out of 5 times. Because we block it, and if we wouldn't block it, then 1/3 of his range would be pocket aces. And now, when you have 1 ace, he doesn't really have aces often. So the thing is, what does he have? Versus queen-x, we're doing pretty decently. Versus pocket kings, we have decent equity with the overcard. If he has ace-queen, it sucks. But now we see, when his 3-bet range becomes wider, it changes the whole situation. And one question is, is this a sizing that he's going to bet forward? And half a pot is a bit weird sizing. I would expect to see a pot or 1/3, depending on his hand. But he might be a player who bets half a pot here with pretty much all he has. That's quite common. Now, we know that we step one step higher. We know opponent doesn't hit the board hard almost ever. Because he shouldn't have a lot of pocket queens. Like, how often he has, let's say, any 2 pair or better, which is easy stack off. It's only less than 10% of times. So we know he doesn't have a strong hand. So we could raise and generate fold equity versus 91% of his hands. If he folds king-queen, ace-queen, pocket kings, pocket aces. But on the other hand, now here's the opponent's level, then we think on this level. And now, if opponent is good, he understands that he doesn't hit the board often, which means you can shove here lightly, as I said, my bluff. And you don't hit the flop either. Let's do reversed. Let's give hero 50% range without aces or ace-king-king, because you would fold bet those. Then how often hero has 5-deuce or better? So 2 pairs, easy stack off. And it's slightly more. 11 versus 9 of him. So, this is... I call this an action board, or leveling board. Because when 2 rags play, both of them understand that the opponent doesn't hit this board. So they can make moves with whatever they have. If opponent is kind of player who bet-folds here, try overpair, then it's pretty easy raise. Because with the backdoors versus aces, if he decides to call, then you have almost 30%. Versus pocket kings, you have even more. Almost flipping. And you have tons of fold equity. But if he understands, and if you raise, "If I was here with aces versus good Rex, I would bet, and if opponent shoves, I would stack off." Especially if aces have any backdoor equity. Because opponent is going to shove lightly. So versus a good Rex versus this sizing, the question is, if we call, what do we achieve? Why calling is better than raising? I mean, raising, folding, hard to say which one is nearly better. Raising is probably plus EV marginally, depending how likely he calls. Folding is EV 0. But if we call, how often turn is good card for us? Either increasing our equity, or gives us nice opportunity to bluff and represent something. When we call here, our hand looks a lot like queen-x. Maybe some 3-4s. But most often, it's queen-x type of hand, 5-x. And the good thing is that there's a lot of blanky turns that help us a lot. So, good turns. Ace is a good 1. Because if he bets big, we know we're big. If he checks, we can realize our equity quite well. And it gives us the double cut shot. But ace is not the best ones for us. But any ace, any king, any 9 of any suit. So that's 9, 12 cards. Then 4 is good for us, that's 16 cards. And check-ten-3 are kind of cards that if he checks, we're happy to check with the double cut shot and a pair. So we have 16 really good cards. Then outside of those, there's going to be around 5 to 7 other hearts. Queen and 5 not the best ones, so 3 to 5 additional hard outs. So we are at around 21, 20 to 21 outs at the moment. And if we include some ace-check-ten-3 type of hands, then we can see that we have 20, 20 to 30 outs that help us in some way. Which is quite a lot, it's 50 to 75% of the turns. So the only turns that doesn't help us at all are 6, 7, 8 of non-hearts. Queen and 5, I wouldn't turn it into a bluffing 3-bet pot, so there's few more. But there's a lot of turns that help us. And even if the third is a 10, opponent checks. Well, we could bluff or we could check, we have double cut shot and pair. So calling becomes a really good option. Because there's so many turns, we have so much good cards for us. Always, when you think about just calling, the question you need to ask is, "How often the turn improves me? How often I like to see the turn?" Because if most of the turns are really bad for you, and you don't know what to do, then calling might not be the best option. But then comes the chin. Now we have open ender and a cut shot. I don't know what's that called. Triple bellybuster, or... I don't know. If anyone of you know the word for open ender and a cut shot, then let me know. An open bet less than half a pot, and this is a weird bet. It's SPR 2, turn opens, 3 draws, straight 5 to 9, queen 9, and then the hard draw. So now there's 4 different draws on the board. Good afternoon, then out them. So that sizing is weird. I would either check or pot. So either commit yourself, or just check and see what happens. Half a pot bet in general, at small stakes, 90% of times can be translated, I don't know what to do. Try aces, ace-queen, pocket kings. I don't know what to do, I bet half a pot. Well, you have ace-high. So you don't know should you stack off or not. Versus his range, we have around 47% of course, we don't know what his range is. Definitely he has something. But, if we raise, we need to have fold equity. Because it doesn't make sense. Versus the barrow-in-range, we don't have 47. So he was pretty much on the flop, he could bet everything. And on the turn, he needs to have something. So let's include all the queen-plus, so pair, 2 pairs overpair, sets, flush draws, any kind of straight draw. So we have 46, doesn't actually drop a lot. So if you estimate to have any fold equity, you can raise. And... Let's say that we stack off here, and what is his stack off range? He's going to call pretty much any flush draw. Because if he has a flush draw in his 3-bet range, he's going to have something. At least a cut shot with it, overpair, 1 pair. And then... Let's say that he's going to stack off with any 2 pairs or better. So the only thing he folds is a draw unless he has a rap. So he's actually not going to fold often. Well, he's actually going to fold 43%. Oh yeah, he's going to fold all his overpair, sorry. My brain doesn't function. So actually, if this is his calling range, all the flush draws in his 3-bet range, including combo draws, all 2 pairs or better, and all the raps, the EV of a shove is 30 BBs. So if he folds and tries overpair, the shove becomes very profitable. Then... Let's give him a pretty tight range. Let's assume that he has 2 pairs or sets, and he's going to shove any river. The reason why I gave him this range is now we used to peel and stack off, which means that we call the turn, and then stack off on the river if our hand improves. Which means, when his range is all the made hands, we need to hit our draw. Straight or flush. And then we can stack off. And if we hit any of those, it's pretty much the nuts here, so I think it's pretty safe assumption. So if he stacks off on all the rivers, which is the best case scenario. We hit, and we get paid for the rest of his stack. We can see the EV. And that way, we can compare shoving and calling. And both are in best case scenario. So the EV of call and stacking of river is 35 BBs. Pretty much the same, there's some variance. And in real life, the opponent actions have variance too. But we can see that both are quite profitable in the best case scenario. Well, the worst case scenario is here, that we call, and we don't get paid. How many nut outs we have? We can calculate by that. Do we need implied odds to make the call? And we have pretty much 7 hearts for the nuts. I would say that queen of hearts and 5 of hearts are definitely... Oh, thanks for following, Durofis. Queen and 5 of hearts are pretty much outs, because with that sizing, it would be weird for him to have a set. But let's do the worst case scenario. And let's comment that we have 7 hearts as a nut out. Then we have 6 outs with the check then draw, and 6 out with ace-3. So it's 9 more outs. So at least 16 nut outs. Most likely 18. And 16 nut outs means that it's going to hit around 34% of times. Let me find my calculator, I can show you the exact... Yep, there we go. There's 8 known cards, 4 of our hand, 4 of the board. We don't know what opponent cards are. So there's going to be 44 unknown cards in the deck. And we have 16 outs, at least. So 16 divided by 44, 36.3. And to call this bet, we need only 23% equity. So... When I compare different actions, so here, between calling and shoving, the starting point is that is calling plus EV. And we're going to hit the nuts 36% of times. And we need to hit our hand 23% of times to make profitable, even without any implied odds. So calling is plus EV. And quite a lot actually. And then we always have implied odds if we make our hand. So, to do something else than a call, we need to be pretty sure that it's even more plus EV. And here, if he stacks off on all the rivers that we made, the EV is 34, 35. We can calculate and see if it changes a lot. If I would change the settings so that it makes a lot of calculations, it would take too long to do. So we can just do it a couple of times, see if it changes a lot, to see what's the variance. Yeah, pretty much 35. So calling is definitely plus EV with decent demand. Then, the shove marginal is plus 30 if he folds overpairs. And now that's a bit if. Because I've seen people stack off with pocket aces. And now, if he stacks off with everything that he bets on the flop, it was queen-plus on the flush draws, and 3-4-plus. So if he stacks off with everything, because he's call happy, then our turn shove is only plus 13 BBs. And that's the big difference in my opinion, why we shouldn't shove this turn as a semi-bluff, unless the opponent folds. Because with calling, even no matter what the opponent is, the EV is almost the same as shoving in the best case scenario. So it's really hard to say that shoving is nearly better option than to call when we are 100% sure that calling is plus EV. When we have some action or strategy that is currently plus EV strategy, then to deviate from that, you need damn good information. Because it's almost a starting point. So, it's like shoving aces pre-flop. It's currently plus EV, especially if you have decent aces. Above-average aces. It's plus EV for sure. So to do something else, you need really good information. Don't get tricky, because you want to mix your game, or you just want to be fancy. If you have a current date plus EV line, you should do that unless you have a really good information to believe that another line is even more plus EV. Like here, I hope I don't upset anyone, but if someone says that "Sometimes I raise, sometimes I call", then on small stakes, that is just complete nonsense. It means that you don't know what to do. And you try to give your multiple options. Because when someone says that "It's a clear shove", you can say, "Yeah, that's what I often do." Or "It's a clear call, yeah, that's what I often do." Try to pick up what's your standard line. Like here, standard line would be to call always. Unless we have information to believe that shoving becomes plus EV, or even more plus EV, and we know why it becomes more plus EV. So, the only thing that I criticize here is this sizing. I checked many times from the hand history, but hero doesn't shove. He leaves three and a half BBs behind. I don't know why, but if you have preset sizings, then make sure that... Because now when he calls, you just missed three and a half BBs. And it doesn't sound a big thing, but if you do that kind of sizing error once in 100 hands, it affects your win rate by minus three and a half BBs per 100, and that's huge. Of course, probably doesn't happen every 100 hands, but if it happens every 200 hands, it decreases your win rate by minus 1.75. So really small errors can pile up. So make sure that here, don't leave three and a half BBs behind. And then out this asking that is, since of the days, if we back users, for example, three, seven, above average aces. Well, easy way to check your average aces is, well, we can open proper draws. Now it's so small, but you just check your equity versus random aces. And what we was, ace, ace, seven, three. Ace, ace, seven, three, single suited. Nope, it's 49.3. So random aces is slightly ahead of you. If we make a double suited, boom, we become small favorite. In reality, it's a shove aces, but if you have some really dry aces, like ace, ace, seven, three, rainbow. And opponent makes a four bet, you know he has aces, then you're 45, 55 on the dock. And then you will compare different lines that, okay, should we call and shove any flop to generate at least tiny portion of fold equity? If opponent stacks off on any flop, then the outcome is same as if we would shove pre-flop. Yeah, sometimes opponent smashes the board, you're getting in with 0%, but still the outcome of the hand would be same as if you would shove pre-flop. But if you just call the four bet and don't shove any flop and create at least 1% of fold equity. There's one flop in the world where opponent is going to fold his try aces. Then your EV goes up. So if you're sure that opponent has aces and you are not clearly ahead of him, like having double suited aces 55, 45, you're 50, 50, or you're having less than 50% equity, then you could increase your EV by just calling and shoving any flop. Of course, then, if opponent did have pocket kings, it sucks and you lose a lot of value. So you have to be pretty damn sure that opponent has pocket aces. And at small stakes, I've seen so many weird four bets in my life that I don't do that. Because it's easier just to shove pre-flop. And sometimes you get it in with 25% equity, but in the long run, it will balance. When you can ace versus aces, the outcome doesn't matter in the long run. And tell it man beer beer, you need to ask something from Detroit. So you can make question like, "Is Qubari awesome?" And, haha, "I just won 10 Q bucks." Thank you, Troy. Oh, it's that easy. So let's do that again. Okay, he doesn't want to answer me. Okay, I upset my Troy. Damn. So here's the hand, and I think, all in all, Timmy played it well. If the opponent is decent and his range is wider than pre-flop. But on PL2, unknown opponent, they are very aces heavy with their three bets, then I would fold the flop most of times and just make my life easier. But it's important to know why. And that's why I wanted to do this analyzing. Because if we just tell Timmy that, okay, yeah, fold the flop, call the turn, some river, easy game, it doesn't tell why calling the flop is good, why it's better than shoving, why turn calling is better than shoving, why calling is better than folding, and so on. But now when we explain, I think the learning curve is better. Because now you know why we do something. That's always very important. Is there a fast forward hour on Party Poker? I don't know. I tried to see. Oh, it is. Well, let's do that first and then PL reasons. If you don't know what PL reasons is, then it's pretty nice app. I'm going to show you in a while. Now the Party Poker started up. Oh, one more thing. What, I criticized Party Poker a lot yesterday, and on Sunday. Because I found out that on their leaderboard, you can opt-in on Sunday evening, just before the leaderboard closes. And you can opt-in and it calculates all the rates you have done for the week. So that's the way Party Poker leaderboard works. You can always opt-in later. So if you play fast forward leaderboards and then you see on Sunday that, okay, I'm fifth on the rankings and top seven gets paid, I don't need to play much today. Then remember that, understand, there might be late entries on the last minutes of leaderboard. Like last week, there was this one player, Nikita, 1998. He wasn't on the leaderboard on the Sunday evening, and boom, he went to first. And everyone else dropped down one spot. And if there's multiple players doing that, then it's going to suck. So make sure that you understand how they work, so there won't be any surprises. But then positive news is that Party Poker brings back hand histories. And in the future, you will be able to export your hand histories and then you can import those to tracker. They won't be anonymous, so you don't get any information to opponents, but you can analyze your own game, which is awesome. And they just brought it back. Oh, it doesn't get any bigger. No. We want to rate $1, and then we go to PL reasons. So, and Party Poker calculates, so even if you lose the pot, it gives a rate. So now when we see the flop... Oh, you can't opt-in. What? They change. I think that's a good thing if it's auto-opting, so that doesn't happen anymore. Oh, he's calling, okay, now he has the aces. Oh! Fast forward leaderboards. Yeah, no opt-in. Okay, change. Oh, check, check, eight, five, he's not in fold. We want to rate $1 to get the card. Really? Yeah, now it's a fold. Yeah, I don't think he could ever have a non-full house. Yeah, I guess it isn't bad. We're going to wait pre for, because we want to rate $1. To see if we won $500 from the hit cards. Well, I think he has the aces very often when he checks the flop. We made $1, that was worth it. Value betting. In where? With the checks. We made a full house on the river, so trying to get value from his ace X. Everyone is three betting me. Yeah, the leaderboards are, I don't know. I made money with them. I played three weeks in those and I had money on all three weeks, so I don't mind. But yeah, it updates weirdly and then sometimes there are pops players who weren't there. And the problem with leaderboards is that I know for sure that very often, there's more than one player playing the account. Oh dear God, what is this? People are just punishing us, and now we lose. We won $1 from the scratch card and lost probably 25 on doing it. I know for sure that with rail races, people asked friends to play on their account when they sleep. There's no way someone plays 24/7. And I'm not going to give names, but if there's a player who plays more than 24 hours in a row, then you start to question that, is it the same person? If anyone has played 24 hours, then you know how it feels. So someone at Micros doing that sounds a bit weird. It's not impossible to win PL25 and PL50. Because in both, you get the maximum amount of hands with pretty much, let's say, three tables both. So you open six tables fast forward. And it's not a problem to play six tables. Because the algorithm to seed players is different from stars. And Party Poker, if the player pool is, let's say, 50 players, then it doesn't matter if you have three, four, five, or six tables open. Most of tables are waiting for hands. So you have the same amount of hands with three tables open than you would play with six. So you can open three and three and get the maximum amount of hands. So I think if you're capable of playing six tables of fast forward, then you should pretty much always go for two states. Because with the same invested time, you can get really high in two leaderboards instead of one. But then when people play 24/7 for the whole week, you wonder that something physical going on. But I'm not sure if it's worth it. Most players on the leaderboards at the moment get around 10% rate back unless you actually aim for the top prices. But with normal volume, when you play a lot, you get around 10% extra rate back. So I'm not sure if playing fast forward redirects short-handed is worth it to the rate. Well, when I play six per state, I don't really have action at the same time on all tables that often. I tried it and I found out that there's always three tables waiting, or very often. And let's see. I have to answer this one. All right. PL reasons.